Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, Tuesday, September 3rd, 6:30 PM at the McAuliffe Hearing Room. All selectmen are present. Start with public comment, if there is any.
Good evening. Karen Hanlon-Shimkes, Lindbrook Road. Thank you for allowing me to speak briefly. I noticed on the agenda that there's a topic covering special municipal employee designation, and I just wanted to express some concerns regarding that. As you well know, 268A sets the minimum, minimum standard, emphasis on the word minimum, of ethical conduct for all town employees and officials. The town does have room for improvement in terms of following a process for review and issuing opinions. As a member of the voting public and a taxpayer, it's not always been clear to me what that process is, and in fact, if it's followed at all. I know other towns do have a process where the Board of Selectmen, the appointing authority for many boards, would review and issue opinions. There's a need to review existing conflict of interest forms on file already. And also, a need for a general awareness of who may not have submitted a form, inadvertently or inadvertently. There are improvements needed in terms of the way the forms are filled out. They must contain adequate detail. Under Section 19, no municipal employee may participate in such a matter as an employee in any particular matter, emphasis on the word particular, in which he or she or a member of his or her immediate family has a financial interest. And that includes being a partner in a firm. For example, proposed zoning amendments, proposed zoning amendments, that includes our downtown, are considered to be particular matters for purposes of MGL 268A. The definition of participation includes participating in the formulation of the matter of a vote, the formulation of a matter of a vote, as well as the actual vote, actually voting on a particular matter. Section 19 encompasses any financial interest without regard to the size of the interest. It can be small or large. Section 23 sets general standards of conduct. It prohibits a public employee from using his official position to secure for himself or others privileges or exemptions that are of substantial value, act in a manner which would cause a reasonable person, reasonable person, to conclude that any person can improperly influence or unduly enjoy his favor in the performance of his official duties, or that he's likely to act or fail to act as a result of kinship, rank, position, or undue influence on any party or person. Section 23 focuses not on just the actual conflict of interest, but also appearances of conflict of interest. Therefore, one cannot use his or her official position to secure unwarranted privilege for yourself, your spouse, your company, or your partners. So I'll just conclude by saying that there's room for improvement in terms of transparency. At least two of you new members ran on the platform of increased and improved transparency. And here's the opportunity to educate oneself, explore and improve the processes and policies or lack of policies. Special employee status, you should note very carefully, is not a way to avoid conflicts of interest. Thank you.
Anybody else? Public comment? Hearing members will move on to scheduled appointments. First, Chief Ken Paulus on recommendations that he has for our board to act on. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Pleased to be here tonight. Fantastic day. We went live at about 3:00 with our dispatch system at the new building, so we're in full operation over there, and we're lucky enough to raise the flag for the first time. So, a very proud day. The first police station ever built directly as a police station in the town of Southborough. So, everybody's very pleased, and I thank all of you, even when you were not on the board, or citizens. I know everybody has supported this wholeheartedly, and it just sinks in every day that, you know, I walk into the building. So, start off by thanking everybody, you know, just from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you.
Congratulations. I know it's a very, very busy day for you with a lot of things to coordinate, and I appreciate you taking the time to meet with us this evening as well and extending your day. So, thank you.
That's why I'm sitting down.
Yeah.
What's first that we have to, I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Sorry. So, the first item is appointment of Austin Chapsky as full-time student police officer.
Yes, so, Mr. Chapsky, the position's available due to the retirement of Lieutenant Sean James in June. So, we're gonna appoint Austin Chapsky. His brother Cam is also a patrol officer on the job. He's already a full-time dispatcher for us, so he's had a chance to prove how good of a fit he's gonna be with the department, so we're very happy to have him. He's a graduate of Algonquin, and he holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Worcester State College. I know by looking at his transcripts, he was a 4.0 student. He's also a town resident. So, we're happy to have him, and he's gonna transition to student officer, and he's gonna start the academy on that date on September 9th. So, we'll change his status from full-time telecommunications officer to student officer, and per the contract, he'll start at 700 per week.
Thank you. Any questions on the board?
Actually, Chief.
There we go. Sorry. Just curiosity more than anything else, just 'cause I don't know, and I suspect maybe people watching don't know. How many full-time student police officers do you have at any one time?
Well, right now, he'll only be one. While they're in the academy, they're a student officer.
Okay.
So then they'll transition to a full-time probationary officer for one year after they get out of the academy.
Okay. And will somebody then come in and replace him, the position he's held?
Yes, we're gonna get to that next.
Okay. Well, all right, and working my way down, it seemed like he was going up to a position.
Yes.
The next person's going up to a position.
Yes.
So I guess the question is, is somebody coming in to get that position?
That would be a part-time dispatcher, and please, if you know somebody, that would be a very good fit. We have an open application process right now, and we'd love to expand our pool of part-time dispatches. In fact, I think maybe four out of the last five that we hired came through dispatch first.
All right. Glad I could do some advertising for you then.
Thank you.
All right. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I would move that we vote to appoint Austin Chapsky as full-time student police officer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Item two, appointment of Brittany Remillard to full-time communications officer from part-time. Chief.
So, yes, Brittany is currently a part-time telecommunications officer, and as stated, the opening becomes available when full-time TC Austin Chapsky steps down to begin his career as a student officer. Ms. Remillard is currently enrolled in the criminal justice program at Worcester State College and is a member of the U.S. Army National Guard stationed out of Redding, Mass. Recommended pay rate for her would be step two of the local 44 contract due to her training and experience currently.
Any questions, comments? No. Is there a motion?
I will move to elevate a point. Ms. Remillard to the position of full-time telecommunications officer.
Second. Move seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And item three, appointment of police business administration position. Chief.
So, I'm gonna read the letter verbatim, 'cause I wanna pause for a second at the end of the first paragraph. Please accept my request to appoint Ms. Cynthia MacLeod to the position of police business administrator effective Thursday, October 3rd, 2019. The position is available due to the retirement of Mr. Richard Mattioli, who has honorably served the Southborough Police Department in various capacities for the last 42 years. So, I think his shoes are gonna be bigger to fill than when any time I leave in the future. So, a wealth of knowledge, he certainly deserves every second of a peaceful retirement. And not that Rick's going anywhere. I know he'll always be around as a volunteer or a special officer for as long as he possibly can. So, it's so long, but it's not goodbye, and he's really an institution in the department and in the town. So, from the bottom of my heart, I transitioned from a different state, a different way of doing things, a different department, and when I walked in, he said, "Don't worry about a thing. I'll take care of everything on this end. You just go do what you gotta do." And, boy, I tell ya, he was up to his word. I never had to worry about a single thing on the business end of the department or how things ran. So, he was just an absolute tremendous help to me, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank him, and I'm gonna miss him terribly.
Chief, could you recount some of the things that, you know, Rick has done for the town? I mean, he's held a number of positions within the police force, and I see him all over the place, and he always has that smile. He's always, he's at Algonquin Games and whatnot, serving the public there as well. I mean, can you recount for the people that may not know him as well?
He's a one-man community policing unit, and I know his uncle was, you know, the long-serving chief, Frank Mattioli, and I know he served as a reserve officer working the road for years and years, and then eventually he transitioned into the business administrator position. But Rick does so many things. He's head of the police association, which raises funds, and it all goes to charitable organizations or to support people or good causes, you name it. He's there. Special Olympics, Christmas drives, you name it. He's always at the front of the line. So, I'd be embarrassed to try and recount them all, but, yeah, he's Mr. Southborough, that's for sure.
Decades of service.
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
So, we had an interview process. I'm sure Mark can fill you in on any of the questions about the process. Looks like Ms. MacLeod is gonna be an excellent fit. We interviewed her. She was head and shoulders above everybody, and then also, she brings that wealth of town knowledge and those relationships to the position. So, if we do have some questions in the transition, she can go to the other departments, and that relationship is already there. So, we're very excited to have found her, and I think it's gonna make the transition a lot easier than I thought it would be, you know, several weeks ago. So, I'm happy for that.
It's always good when you have strong candidates step up. So, Mr. Purple, if you'd just want to expand on the process that we went through.
Sure. So...
Ms. MacLeod, again, rose to the top in that search.
Well, I think, having known Cindy for a number of years, being in the assessors office, and I will point out, she's in the back of the room, but I do, you know, she's brought a great, you know, expertise and work ethic to the assessors office. Anybody I think has gone in, you know, she understands what customer service is, and, you know, she helps to, you know, to keep everything moving forward, you know, with all of our parcels and, you know, we're getting, helping Paul get the tax rate set, you know, just a great understanding of how we do and what we do. And I think it's gonna translate well to the police department. She has a great skill set, and, you know, you could plug her into a number of positions in town, and she'd be successful. The process was very much like most of our others, normal advertisement, you know, inside, outside, and quite honestly, you know, she, you know, based on, you know, her resume, her experience, and what she can bring to the position, it very easily rose to the top, and I think, you know, it's always nice, and the chief, I think, you know, would say the same thing, when the decision's easy, you know, when it becomes obvious this is the right person for the position. So, I fully concur with the chief's recommendation, and, you know, look forward to the transition. And she's moving into, you know, a brand-new building, so she kinda gets to, you know, figure out where everything goes.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments from the board? Ms. Brosio.
Thank you. I would just like to add that I think it's a benefit to the process when we do have an employee that's been with the town longstanding, that can step into another position within the town in such a great way and be able to be such a benefit, and to try to replace Rick is not gonna be an easy feat in any way. I know I had talked to him a few weeks ago, and this will be the first time in close to 100 years there hasn't been a Mattioli in some way associated with the police and fire. So, you know, the last year, we've seen the same thing with the Morrows, and now we're seeing it with the Mattiolis as well. So, I congratulate you. I thank you for stepping forward. I think you're an excellent candidate for the position, and I know that you're gonna do a great job, based on the great job that you've already done. So, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Mr. Healy.
I will, I wanna get the title right. I move that we appoint Cynthia MacLeod to the position of police business administrator.
Second. Move seconded. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Chief, before you do go, I'm gonna go out of order on one item, and I'm gonna jump to consent agenda item A, approval of new cruiser detail rate as recommended by Police Chief Ken Paulus. Chief, if you could just give us a quick little summary of your recommendation there.
So, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we have quite a few details in town.
I have.
So, it does pick up a lot of wear and tear on the cruises, and as you all know, just from your personal vehicles, the cost of repairing vehicles becomes more and more expensive. I did some research, and I found out that the cruiser use rate was established by Chief Weber about 12 or 13 years ago, and it hadn't moved. So, I did a survey of the area towns, and you can see it, most are at $20, $25. So, I thought that that was a fair number to bring it up to for the rate per hour. Like I said, the cost of maintenance on the cruises has shot right up, so I think we're just, you know, bringing it up to market rate.
Any questions, comments? Mr. Stivers.
Question. Just out of curiosity, if we had the $20 rate for the past year, what would the revenue difference have been roughly?
I'd have to look at the hours.
We have hundreds of hours of details.
Yes, yes.
So, $10, so...
I believe I saw a stat when I did the ask for the new cruises, and it goes into a town account, but it was, the three-year period was somewhere around $65,000. That number rings in my head. So, increase that.
So, that could be tens of thousands of dollars.
Possibly, yes.
Okay.
And there's gonna be no let-up to the number of details coming up.
Sadly. Thanks.
Any other comments? I'll move that we approve the new cruiser detail rate as recommended by Police Chief Ken Paulus. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, and I'll just, before I step off the podium, just to remind everybody, we've moved our operations. So, there's a big digital sign over at the police station saying that we've moved. There's a sign in the front window. I believe fire department will be moving over the course of the next two or three days. But just to reiterate to the public, we're off of Main Street and conduct all your business now at 32 Quarterville Road.
Okay. Thanks. And I was actually driving up that road tonight, and I think people just need to, as I was up, would drive down Main Street, I'd always be cognizant as I approached the driveway, you know, to look in case there's any vehicles exiting. So, as you're traveling on 85 now, you know, north and south, you know, take a second, take a look, and make sure that there isn't a cruiser, ambulance, or fire truck coming out of that exit as well. So, just be aware of that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Take care, Chief.
Get some rest.
Yeah. Next item, scheduled appointment, request for heavy vehicle exclusion on Pine Hill Road. This item is on our agenda after a request was made by residents in the Pine Hill Road area to consider a heavy vehicle exclusion on Pine Hill Road. So, I don't, the letter was sent to us by Ms. Rosson?
Yes.
Yes, if you wanna, wherever you're more comfortable.
Well, good evening. Thank you for including this on your agenda. The reason that this issue has been brought up again, apparently, there was a survey in 2015 that was taken, and there was a report by the MDM Transportation Consultants, which was a memorandum which was dated the 25th of September. So, a number of us have been looking through this report, and I have to say that there are quite a lot of conclusions and suggestions that either haven't been implemented, but a lot of the conclusions are outdated. I hope that Mr. Purple isn't in too much disagreement with what I'm saying, but, you know, for example, they're talking about safety characteristics, adequate capacity, you know, for example, what is the level of service LOS? They talk about the interpretation of the speed limit, and, you know, when I addressed the letter to you, I was essentially addressing the actual traffic issue on Pine Hill Road because of something that is happening just across the border in Framingham on Eastly Farm, which involves construction vehicles, heavy construction vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. But I've had a lot of feedback from residents both on Pine Hill and on Palmenta Road, who is, you know, who've been telling me, "That's not the only issue. There are issues of, you know, extreme danger at the intersection of Palmenta and Pine Hill. There's the issue of speeding. There's the issue of parking." You know, there's a lot of parking, I believe, from landscapers on Pine Hill Road. There's the issue of the fact that there's no middle line down the road, so you get overtaken, even if you're not traveling at 15 miles per hour, you get overtaken by people speeding. So, it's essentially, you know, it's a danger, it's a danger, it's a public danger, and, you know, what are we going to do about it? So, the issue I know of speed bumps has come up in the past, and I think that they've been sort of shown to be not very effective. However, on Edmunds Road going towards Nobscot in Framingham, they were obliged to put speed bumps on that road because somebody got killed getting mail out of his mailbox. And I have to say that for some of us who have our mailboxes on Pine Hill Road, it's dangerous sometimes, you know, you have to sort of sidestep away from a car going by, you know, so there are a whole lot of possibilities that might happen in the future, and I think there are a number of us who really feel that this is the little forgotten rural road in Southborough, and something has to be done about it. And I don't know what the answer is, and I'm hoping that you, as a board, might be able to come up with, you know, some suggestions, some ideas.
Okay. Right. Thanks. Anybody wanna offer anything to start?
I guess I would like to hear from, yeah, the Department of Public Works. And Karen, just as a prelude, I took a look at both the report and the, what is it called? The manual on uniform traffic control devices that I guess governs all this stuff, and it just seemed like that there are a number of potential things that could be done with a road where there are safety issues, but, well, that's the prelude. It seems like an awful lot of them are restricted by what the state says we can and can't do to roads.
This is a lot more complicated than probably I was thinking, 'cause I was thinking mostly just traffic, truck exclusion, a heavy vehicle. So, the manual on uniform traffic control devices is basically what sets it that when you drive, you expect the fog line on your right to be white, you expect on your left to be a yellow line. If you drive in a country where they drive on the other side, the yellow line is still, like, it's made that way. Stop signs are red, they're never purple, right? So, you have these standards, and basically, traffic is based on anticipation. What you anticipate's gonna, is gonna happen. That's why you don't put a stop sign just in the middle of a road when there's no intersection or your road's not ending, right? You just don't stop somebody 'cause they're not anticipating it, and they'll, they basically ultimately will blow through it. It's a law. It has to be, it has to meet some certain standards. So, speed humps are something that, if they are put in, there are standards obviously for them. They did put them in on Edmunds Road. They are clustered, if you cluster them close, you keep people going slow through the speed humps. The problem that they're finding on Edmunds Road, and I talked to, in Framingham, they have a traffic, it's, I can't think of the name of it, it was like the Traffic Control Commission or something, but it's the DPW Fire Police and a couple of business people, and they met about different issues like this and did put those up on Edmunds. And they do get a lot of complaints about it. We do get some complaints about them, the ones that we do have on Parkerville. They're loud. People, once they get through them, speed, because they're aggravated, that they just had to slow down so much, and it does end up being an issue for that. One of the other problems we have in town is that we have them very specifically right now. They were done as part of the school safety study for Trotter School, and I apologize because I'm kinda running around because speed humps wasn't really on my forecast. I was thinking the HZVE. So, with, as part of building Trotter, they put sidewalk in on Parkerville, and they put those speed humps in. They did a safety study through, also for Finn at the time, and they changed some signage on that too, down there. So, but they did not, Parkerville Road at the time, and I definitely say at the time, residents were not interested in sidewalk, so that, that's why that didn't happen there on the Finn School side, the south side of Parkerville, of 9 on Parkerville. So, the problem we have is, is that Pine Hill Road, absolutely, there's a lot of traffic, absolutely. Flag Road, a lot of traffic. Parkerville Road's a lot of traffic. Middle Road's a lot of traffic. Woodland Road, we have very few connecting roads in the town. If you actually look at our road network, the through streets we have carry such a load of traffic because there's only a few that connect 9 and 30, or they'll even, you know, even connect basically the north to the south. 85's the only one that goes all the way through. Then you go east-west, you really only have 30, and you have Southville and a Framingham-Malborough mix up there. But really trying to get anywhere, you end up on these few through streets. And so, Pine Hill is one, like I said, and those streets, those are our old streets. So, our new streets, planning boards made it so that you have sidewalks, so that you have a wide enough road, you have some sort of shoulder on the road to, so that even if it's a 22-foot road, you've got, the traffic's going slow enough, it's not a problem. What we have with these roads is that they seem to have been horse paths that turned into a cart path, which turned into, at some point, a road. There's not really drainage, there's no shoulder, there's no refuse for, not refuse, there's refuge for a pedestrian, a biker, somewhere just to get off the road if cars are coming, or you have a bus and a truck passing. It's a problem throughout town, so that's why now it sort of, it gets into a much bigger thing of how we deal with that globally throughout town. I mean, we all know the solution is actually, or at least, I believe everyone knows, that the real solution is to rebuild the road, build the sidewalk so that it's safe for pedestrians, so that you have a space for bicyclists, and that you can actually use the roads all, you know, all the different people who need to use it, you know, so you have this global use. Unfortunately, it changes the character of the road such drastically that people really get upset, and even putting a line in on Flag did create a little bit of an issue. And even putting a line in on Flag did create a little bit of an issue. On Pine Hill, there is no actual speed limit, I did check that, we don't have a law for it. Speed limit laws are tough because they're based on, again, everything's based on anticipation, so it's what the speed people are going, and they will let us because it's a, it's a narrow road, and because it's fully residential, which almost every road in Southborough except Turnpike is. You can, you, you might be able to get five, five miles an hour below the 85th percentile of what people are going, but the problem is if everyone is speeding, you're gonna end up setting a speed limit higher than we would want. So, that gets dicey also.
Yep.
Putting up driver feedback signs isn't a bad idea, it's just, there's, some areas are thickly settled enough that we could actually do it, and it would count, and that was the one solution that I had thought of originally, that that might be something good to at least get people started to think about the speed they're going on that road.
So, one of the similarities, actually, that, that I saw in this request related to Pine Hill Road, that I have seen come up with respect to Flag Road, is a, you know, an existing speeding traffic issue that has the potential to get worse with develop, with the development that may be planned, that is planned. And I, for one, I'm not ready to make that jump right now to move forward with the major reconstruction alternative on Pine Hill Road, the regrading and land-taking and all that, I'm just not ready for that yet. But similar to what we did on Flag Road, I think that there may be some more incremental measures that we can take to improve the situation. I did receive, and have received, positive feedback for a lot of the measures that we took on Flag Road, by adding that central line, by adding the, the message signs, giving driver feedback on the speed that they are actually going. There was reference that has been made, and just so everybody's clear, we did that traffic study, the town undertook that traffic study in 2015. There were seven recommendations that were made, and they all varied in, in degree. Really, the one that hasn't been implemented is that major construction project to regrade and do land takings and, and do other clearings on Pine Hill Road. Other measures have been taken, we have added the line along the full length of Parmenter, right, the single yellow line?
Yes.
We have added a single yellow line for a portion of Pine Hill Road, I think 150 feet at the intersection, the stop sign, there has been some clearing that we've done. I think that I would be, you know, in favor of pursuing some of those other measures, you know, if continuing that yellow line along the full length of Pine Hill Road makes sense. You know, if adding, you know, the message signs for the driver feedback, both on Parmenter, east-west, and Pine Hill, at various locations, I think, you know, those are other incremental steps that I think we ought to consider before we, you know, start bringing all sorts of construction equipment off Main Street and send it up to Pine Hill Road. I'm not ready for that yet, myself. So, I don't know, if there's others that have thoughts?
I guess some, some questions, and maybe also for the, I'm assuming that a number of people here are from Pine Hill. The way it was listed on the agenda was for, and I wasn't expecting a speed bump discussion as well, but it strikes me that those are two, two slightly different things. Speed bumps are addressing the speed on the road, and the heavy vehicle exclusion, while a heavy vehicle might be going fast, that's reducing the volume of vehicles on the road. And I know there's a threshold, well, I don't know, it's 8% or something like that. So, the study was done in 2015, is there a sense, and it's anecdotal, I understand, there's a study in 2015, is there a sense that the traffic in 2019 is significantly different than it was in 2015? So, I'm, I'm seeing Pine Hill people nodding their heads. Is it an increase in volume overall? Is it an increase in volume of heavy vehicles? What, in other words, what's the primary issue that we're, that you're bringing to our attention?
Volume and speed. Microphones. Yeah, we are gonna have to have people go to a microphone if you are gonna talk.
Yeah, sorry.
So, that's the disadvantage.
I don't get to just ask everybody questions, sorry about that.
Yeah.
It's volume and speed. Volume has increased significantly.
But, but volume of large vehicles, or of just vehicles generally?
Every type of vehicle, every type of vehicle. And in fact, I can sort of state just a personal thing, a couple of weeks ago, I was driving up to that intersection. I mean, you can't really see very well when you look, you're at the top of Pine Hill Road, you look left onto Edmunds. I know that the, the trees were removed, I'm not sure about the stone wall.
No, we didn't.
But you, the, the sightline is, is really not good enough, and you have to edge out, and even though you, there's the 25-mile speed limit panel further down the road, people who are turning onto Pine Hill Road observe that, but people who are going straight on to Edmunds, they don't observe it, they just whizz by. So, you know, that's it, but anyway, the, the other day, I was coming to that intersection, and this huge, sort of, I don't know, 18-wheeler, something like that, turning from Edmunds into Pine Hill Road, just couldn't make it, coming around and keeping to his side of the road. I had to reverse down the road to let him go by. So, you know, it's all sorts of vehicles, it's not just, you know, sedans and SUVs, it's trucks and all sorts of things, all sorts of vehicles.
Marty, I'd add, I'd add that this traffic study in 2015 was actually done in July, which seems to me to be a potential undercount. I think there's likely to be more traffic on the road during the normal school year, not vacation time, potentially, so.
Thank you, Sam, for bringing that up, because in fact, I received an email from a resident who lives very close to that intersection, and he says he wants to bring to everyone's attention that the engineer's traffic study that was written in 2015, oh, where is it? That it was conducted in, in a holiday, vacation time, so the traffic was much less anyway. I mean, you know, if you look at the traffic during vacation time, it's definitely less, especially in the summer. But in, at other times of the year, it's, it's, the volume has increased significantly. I don't want to hold back.
Mr. Kalenda. So, Mr. Shea, so Ms. Rossin has raised some, you know, very legitimate issues about safety concerns on that road. I mean, I, I understand it's always difficult to divert some traffic from, once you divert traffic from one road, it's gonna go to another, then we're gonna have a whole host of other residents who may be upset about that. I don't know if that is something that we want to consider tonight, but there may be some things that we can definitely consider tonight, like, you know, you know, some, some lining, some speed bumps, some, some, I'm, I'm sorry.
Three-way stop signs.
Possibly, as a resident said, a three-way stop sign, in, you know, I, and even if there isn't a designated speed limit on that road, at least there could be that lighting of, you're going X, slow down, you know, regardless of whatever, and we could, we could state whatever we want to be that level of where it flashes and says, slow down. I mean, I, I presume we could do that. But hopefully there, maybe not, Ms. Gallagher?
We would have to, we, we, the prima facie that they expect that for, for a dense, dense area, that's what you can, that's what you're allowed to do, and then, then you can ticket on it. And that would be 30. The, the town selectmen actually now can set that to be at 25 in a heavy, that's a new rule. You'd have to have a hearing, I'd have to look into it a little bit, but that's, that's a new thing that just came out, that you can change your prima facie to be 25 instead of 30. But that's, which is totally appropriate on that, that road and Flag Road and a lot of our roads. But in order to ticket against anything, you have to have, it, it's gotta be a law.
No, that's fine, yeah, I'm not talking about ticketing at this point, I'm talking about what things can we immediately do to help alleviate the concerns.
Right, and speed humps aren't immediate because there's a lot of drainage issues that come with that, so that's not something, that would have to be a full-on engineer. As far as the, the, the safety study that was done, wasn't really done for a vehicle exclusion as much as to just look at that intersection specifically. So, I think that's why, at the time, we were just trying to get something done because of Metcalf Lane was coming in, right?
So, while, while some of this may require additional review, what things do you think, what, what things do you think we could do now?
We could do a traffic study, or a traffic count currently, that could be done now that school's back in session, we would never, I would never do a new one until schools back in session. And we could do that to just see what the numbers are in terms of, that could at least figure out some of the, some of the issues of what the volume really is on that road. The, the problem is, we know there's a lot of volume. The three-way stop is the only thing that maybe could come out of it, is that you might be able to stop people on Parmenter, because, again, a stop sign is a law, so you have to meet a certain warrant, and basically, traffic has to be almost equal on the legs, and to warrant it so that you can stop the traffic on Parmenter, because otherwise, what happens is, like I said, people blow through them through, through a stop sign because they're not anticipating it. They can get ticketed, don't get me wrong, however, you wouldn't, you, you wouldn't necessarily have a law there yet, because if you put it where it's not, where it hasn't met the standards of being a law, you can't take it. But then, that makes it more dangerous.
Yeah, that'd be something we could maybe do.
So, we could do the count easy enough, I mean, we'd have, we'd need the money for it.
And what other, what other things can we immediately do? That's what I'm asking you tonight.
Except for the stripe, that's like the only thing that I know I could get somebody in really quick to do, you know?
Can I address that?
But I, as far as driver feedback signs, I could, we could, we could purchase them, we can get them installed, but it's, it's several months, and I'm not sure where the money would come from right now. So, but the stripe isn't very expensive, that one's a little easier for me to do.
And are these things that you could review and come back to us with recommendations and a budget?
Yes, we could definitely.
Inclusive of a three-way stop sign?
Well, I know a traffic count, if we wanted to do a count, $2,000 would get us a count and an interpretation at least. And that's, that's really where a lot of this would start for any kind of speeding or any kind of law, which would be a stop sign.
I think these things are hopefully good starts.
Well, I think it would give us good information to make educated guesses, or not guesses, educated decisions on, on next steps.
And I, and I, and I also understand there are a number of folks from Pine Hill tonight, but before something like speed bumps, I'd wanna, I suspect there might be some folks who live on Pine Hill who would not be enamored with the idea of speed bumps, and I'd, I'd want to hear from them as well. But I think Mr. Kalenda's idea is, is a good one, Karen, to maybe come up with a menu of potential things we could do. And in, in the meantime, I mean, Mr. Purple, I guess maybe I'll toss this to you, if, if we needed $2,000, do you have it on you?
Yes.
Okay, so we could move for, to.
Do you want more detail?
No, that's fine. I, I, I would, I would, I would, I would move that we designate $2,000 to do what Ms. Gallagher described, the, the traffic count on Pine Hill, as soon as practicable.
And that would be a count at, on Pine Hill and Parmenter on each side of Pine Hill?
Yes, and, and we, because we're interested in the intersection, I'd try to get them to do the turning counts also.
Turning counts, yep.
Mr. Shea, if I may.
I'm sorry, can I just, can I just, I have the motion, if, if that's a motion on the floor, if that motion could be amended to specifically identify the, the engineering fund article, there was $25,000 that was placed into that, we've replenished it a couple of times over the years for instances like this where we've needed some engineering, some consultant review, you know, for things like this. So, if you identify that as the funding source, because you do need to approve that fund being used for that purpose.
I will amend my motion to reflect that.
Thank you.
I will second that emotion, that motion.
And break into song.
Second. Ms. Brascio, you heard a point.
Just, just a, a quick question for Ms. Gallagher. So, in, in looking at some of the things, whether it be speed bumps, speed humps, whatever you want to call them, I know initially this conversation had to do with a truck exclusion of some point. Can you just touch on that briefly, because I, I, I know, I've talked to you about this in the past, so just some of the requirements that it's, it's not an easy thing to do, about having to have connectivity of other roads, can you just briefly touch on that so everybody can understand there's actually a lot involved in, in having a truck exclusion?
Actually, thank you for saying that, yes. So, a truck exclusion, there's, there's a, there's different things that can happen to get one. One of them is that your, your road is mainly residential, which we have, it's not built for it, which we have. There's also that there's a certain amount of, of truck traffic, which is actually inhibiting general commerce on, on the road, which is a 5% to 8% or more. What happens is, the reason these are difficult to get is because of the alternate routes. Your, the state is, they regulate these, and it's based on, they want to make sure that you don't basically inhibit commerce and just make every road in your town truck excluded. So, what happens is, is your, and this is what's really hard with Pine Hill, the detour, if it doesn't lie within the town, wholly within the town, on town roads, then you have to have permission from the town that these, you are now diverting the trucks into, because that's what you're doing, you're saying, hey, you can't come on my road, we're gonna go on that road instead. And the problem is, is if that road instead happens to be in another town, that town has to say, you know what, actually, our road is actually, is set up for this, this is a good, that's fine, we'll take it. Having Edmunds Road be the, the alternate route is basically, right, you're just, you're just, you are moving a problem that right now, maybe we're splitting a little bit between two roads that are very similar in use and in, in design. So, that's, that's one of the reasons why that one was tough. I did talk to DOT about it a little to say, would you, would you approve it? And they're like, not unless we have a letter that says it. And like, which is one of the reasons why, like I said, I had talked to the traffic, the head of that, chair of that committee, who's a police officer over in Framingham, and he's like, I can't imagine that this would ever happen. He's like, we would rather have it off our road too, but obviously, we would never say, yeah, send them to us. So, that's, that's why that's difficult, very specifically with Pine Hill. It also has to be a certain length, that's almost like a five-mile workaround, that's a long way to send a truck. Also, it needs to be somewhat reasonable as far as your, the workaround for the detour.
Karen, all, all of that seems perfectly reasonable. It just strikes me that the, the, the problem with heavy trucks isn't that they're coming down and deciding whether or not to go on Pine Hill or go on Edmunds Road, they're coming as, you know, shortcuts from the highways. And it, I mean, I looked at the rules as well, they didn't make a whole lot of sense to me, I mean, you've described them accurately, but it just strikes me that if, if, maybe this is wrong, but if Framingham were on board with not accepting the additional vehicles, but with also putting an exclusion on Edmunds Road, that that could then force these heavy vehicles to stay on the highway and to stay on the state roads rather than coming through residential neighborhoods. I don't know, maybe that's pie in the sky, but, but again, I don't think the problem is people deciding, should I go down Pine Hill Road or Edmunds Road? It's they're coming off of highways and coming through residential neighborhoods.
Going off of 30 and 85 and 20.
Yeah.
Right, and, but, and part of it is that they're allowed to do that for, to, so you, basically, if they have any kind of delivery in the way, in, on that road or on a road off of it, and, and that's why the truck exclusion are, are actually hard to enforce also for the police, because any kind of local business is still allowed.
Thank you, Karen. I mean, I, I think this is a great step. I, I think getting the traffic study and being able to look at how much the numbers have grown and, and, you know, to, to move from there. But I just wanted everyone to understand that it's not easy to get the truck exclusion. I know we've talked about it on other roads in the past, so I just wanted everyone to be clear on that.
So, we've made a motion here, it's been seconded. Are there any other comments from board members on this?
Not on the motion.
Not on the motion, but.
All right.
Other comments?
Go ahead, then.
No, you said not on the motion.
No, I know that, but whatever you have, please.
I have some other comments. We've heard some good suggestions here, clearly it's a problem that has a lot of dimensions to it. I think that, that it's worth sort of stepping back and looking at it a little more globally in the sense of looking at the source of the problem, and can you do things to address the source? I think there are two issues that I see. One is the, the safety issue on Pine Hill Road as far as sort of normal traffic activity, and that sounds like that's something that should be dealt with. Second is additional traffic that might come from the new marijuana facility in Framingham, which is a secondary thing. I think it's interesting to think about what we might do relative to that as well. I have heard, I don't know if it's true or not, that the Framingham Planning Board was discussing a condition on the permit for that facility that would actually require construction traffic for that facility to go through Framingham and not in Southborough. I don't know if that's true or not, but that would be something that would be interesting to, to examine, I think. Second, I think that I've heard. Second, um, I think that I've heard again, uh, unsubstantiated, that the marijuana facility actually is talking with Framingham about mitigation payments. And it would be interesting to know if there is some opportunity for Southborough to approach them and have a conversation and say, this is gonna have an impact on us, certainly relative to safety on Pine Hill Road and related traffic issues. Um, and see if we can figure out a way to get some funding for some of the things that we're talking about here to try to improve safety on the road. Third, I don't know, um, how you deal with this, but I've driven up Pine Hill Road a number of times in the morning and gotten in a convoy of FedEx trucks going out for the day. And so, um, it's hard to say FedEx, you can't use the road. On the other hand, maybe there are ways to approach them to try to, again, cut off some of this traffic at the source and, uh, ease the, ease the pressure on that particular road. I'm not sure whether there are other options there are for that. And finally, the, uh, Ms. Gallagher referred to the new state law, it's Mass. General Law, Chapter 90, Section 17C, which Framingham recently, um, adopted, which allows the town to set a speed limit of 25 miles an hour in a thickly settled district, which has a specific definition, which I think that Pine Hill Road would satisfy. It's my understanding that we have to take that to town meeting to accept that provision, uh, in state law. But I think that's something that we ought to consider as well. So, in addition to sort of some of the, the short-term, uh, local things we can do, I think we ought to think about some of the others, cutting off the source or mitigating the source as much as possible. Finding funding and looking at changing speed limits, thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be brief. Carol Yozo, 11 Parmenter Road. And let me first say that the line down Parmenter Road doesn't seem to have slowed anything down. I do, I keep my windows open at night and I hear the cars speeding in the middle of the night and all hours of the day. So, I know it's not a big cost to put a line down the road, but it probably isn't gonna really do a lot of good. Just my observation. Secondly, thank you, Sam, for mentioning FedEx, because ever since the facility opened up on New York Ave, we have nothing but FedEx trucks day and night, or mostly during the day, I guess. Up and down Pine Hill, and then they split between Edmunds and Parmenter. And it does add an awful lot of volume, which I'm sure the study will show. An incident that happened, and this refers to the parking on Pine Hill Road, especially, it's not so much a problem on Parmenter because we have Metcalf now to offload it. But the landscaper trucks and trailers parked and blocked an entire lane of traffic, regardless of whether it's on a straightaway or a curve. And just tonight, I was coming up Pine Hill Road at about 4:30, there was a trailer parked just south of Greystone Way at approximately 5153 Pine Hill Road. There were cars coming south on Pine Hill Road and it was just close call after close call. It's, it's just, just gives me goosebumps to think of it, it's just an accident waiting to happen or it's. And then, my final point is, all you have to do is drive up and down Pine Hill and Parmenter and look at the stone walls and how many of them have been crashed into, to see what a problem it is.
I noticed that yesterday.
And I think Celeste can testify to that. She's rebuilt her wall several times. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Celeste Kimball, 17 Parmenter. I actually have to respectfully disagree with Carol. I think a line down Pine Hill Road would be fantastic. It's not a speed issue, it's the person texting all of a sudden looks up and sees the yellow line and goes back on their side. So, I mean, I, I can't imagine why that would not help. So, that, I would strongly suggest that that be done if, if possible, thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanna reemphasize what she just said, we live at 35 on the straightaway. And I walk my dogs every morning and I watch cars coming right down the middle of the road, cause they're letting loose. And then they go over this blind hill, right down the middle of the hill. And I think in the past, there have been accidents on that hill, it hasn't been recent, but there have been. And I just, I just hold my breath, because when you're coming up, it's a totally blind hill. And I think a yellow line down Pine Hill, you know, we've all, when we learn to drive, we learn to look for that yellow line. And I think on Parmenter, it's not about speed, it doesn't stop speed. But I know every time I go down Parmenter, I'm looking at that line when I drive and it keeps me on the right side of the road. And that's true in the curving areas of Pine Hill and in the straightaway. So, I think it would be, if it, if it's doable, let's do it.
Mrs. Shay, I'll agree, I, I think it's, it can't, I don't think it can hurt.
I agree.
And I think that's something that we could do immediately. I'll just remind, anyone speaking, they just name and address is the part of the protocol of who's speaking.
Al Hamilton, 35 Pine Hill Road, you've heard from my better half. I've lived on Pine Hill Road for 23 years, I've lost several mirrors on my cars driving down the roads. Uh, it's actually, the winter is actually much, much worse. I, every year, you know, I help push cars out that have run off the road, because there's no place to put the snow. So, when there's no place to put the snow, the road gets narrower. And, um, so it's, it's the winter that actually is the most dangerous time. I will point out that Marlboro on Parmenter, which is effectively the same road as Pine Hill, the same type, has a double yellow line and white lines on the side. Framingham has a double yellow line, no white lines on the side. And, you know, they've got some very nasty sections of, of Parmenter as well. Uh, you know, we're the only town that hasn't figured out that we need to put a double yellow line down the middle of Pine Hill Road. Because every, the towns surrounding us have all figured that out. I think it's time for us to figure that out as, as well. That, it's a cow path that got turned into a major road. The alternatives, you know, it's, it's a cut through, I, I'll tell you that if you wanted, if, if, I couldn't go down Parmenter and Pine Hill Road to get to my house, uh, from 20 or 30, I wouldn't be going, uh, up Nixon or, or any of those roads. I'd be going down Route 85. Route 85 is a road that is built to have, handle heavy trucks. Last week, I turned onto Pine Hill Road going home, I was behind a garbage truck. The garbage truck was driving on the road, four wheels on the road, hit a tree. Because the tree was growing over the road, it's been hit before. And, you know, I got, my car got covered with tiny little branches, no harm, no foul. But, um, when the, particularly in the winter, when a large truck goes down those roads, you know, you, you, everybody's, you, you sort of have to negotiate and find a place where you can get by each other. It, it, it is, it has been a dangerous place, the traffic is increasing, it has increased, it isn't gonna get less.
Thank you. Yeah, uh, you know what, can I just go to the, um, one comment here, and I'm guessing that's the end for residents? Actually, if you could just stand in the line behind her, just so I remember and don't forget, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Susan Palmer and I live at 107 Pine Hill Road. I'm right on the corner, um, of the intersection. I'd like, like to kindly ask, when you do your traffic study, if you could please have them do it between the times of 7:30 and 9:00 AM in the morning and 4:30 and 6:00 PM in the evening. The traffic study that was done in 2015, I, I couldn't believe when they said that there was not a traffic issue. Because there, it was an issue then and it's more so now. So, if you could do that, I'd be happy, thank you.
Ms. Brascio, and then I'll go to you, sir.
Yes, actually, it, it's a comment from Mr. Purple. Can we also find out, um, historically through the Southborough Police Department, accidents in the last, say, year, two years potentially? And how many tickets are given out on this road for speeding as well?
So, we can answer the first question, Ms. Gallagher has already spoken in the police department, she has that information. The tickets, I'm not sure, but she can speak to the accident piece.
I actually only got it for the intersection, so I just know there was one accident at the intersection and then on, near the intersection, they had a mirror hit. But I didn't ask, um, for the full length of Pine Hill, so I'm not sure what they've got there.
Yeah, can, can we get that information, the full length of Pine Hill? And also, um, I know they can track the tickets and whatnot going on, I'd be curious as to see.
How far back would you like to go?
Two years.
Two years?
Thank you.
Ms. Gallagher?
Mr. Kalenda.
And Ms. Gallagher, in terms of when the traffic study should be conducted, we had some, an idea, I saw you maybe taking notes. Is that appropriate? Are those timings appropriate for when a traffic study?
Yes, so they'll.
And will you see to that?
They'll do counts, um, the, the counts are 24 hours, so that's fine. It's the, um, it's the, just the turning ones and we can, we can get that, they'll do it based on rush hour, based on the counts. So, that, that should be, it, but I wrote them down, so.
And, sir?
Hi, Manuel Torano, 97 Pine Hill Road. One comment, uh, is that there isn't enough police coverage of Pine Hill Road. You will find it when you look at tickets, probably, but there isn't. I hard, I can't remember last time I saw a police car on Pine Hill Road. And I think that will help a lot.
Okay, we can make that note to, uh, the chief policy. All right, so there was a motion that was made on authorizing the study out of the engineering funds that was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Moving forward to the study.
Aye.
Passing unanimously.
In, in terms of a, uh, some line, lineage, can that be done? Do you need anything from us to do that?
Only because it seems to be a very controversial thing, I'd love to have a vote that says to do it.
So, and, and should that be a double yellow line with two, with white lines on, on the side of that? I think would make the most sense, if there's room and it would be appropriate to do that.
I, I get, if I could just weigh in.
Sorry, I just like, the white line, I'm just picturing, it's kinda off the edge, but.
I don't have a problem with, I, I, I agree. I would, I would feel more comfortable, um, um, thinking about voting on this in two weeks and having Ms. Gallagher explain exactly what it would look like. It's, it sounds like you've thought about it, but you'd like to think about it some more?
Um, no, it's, uh, we have a lot of roads that are, that are very narrow, obviously. Um, and so, it's one of those things that if you don't quite have two lanes, a lot, we've, and that's one of the reasons why I know our neighboring towns might have done it, but we've been a little bit careful about not putting a stripe down the middle. You figure a, a double yellow actually takes up eight inches, uh, sorry, 12 inches of space. So, you, you, you almost lose a foot, so that's why we use single yellows a lot instead. But we, we can put it because we are declaring, this is a lane, stay on this side of it. It's just, um, a double yellow, if you cross a double yellow, then you can get a ticket. And sometimes you might not actually be able to not cross it on that road.
Karen, let me ask you two, so if we consider putting the white, I know in spots, two cars can barely get by. So, if we put a yellow and then a white, and it's not big enough for a car to fit through, I, I'm just wondering if we're creating a whole nother problem? Cause there are spots on Parmenter that, I mean, sorry, on, on Pine Hill, that you would be hard pressed to put.
The white and a double yellow, yes. Um, that's why with flag that we actually just went with the single yellow. But. You are the road commissioners.
So, ma'am, you have to use a microphone if you're gonna speak, sorry.
What's the advantage to double yellow versus single yellow? I don't understand, what the, what's the advantage of a?
Same thing.
Can I, can I just stop you and jumping in, because I can see better and, and the, um, the Southborough Access is having trouble picking up people talking when they're not at the microphones.
So, the, the question was, um, was, what's the difference between a double yellow and a single yellow? And I, I don't actually know the answer, my, I believe it might be the double yellow, you're not, you know, you, you don't cross a double yellow line. The single yellow has a little more leeway to it, only because it's just directing you versus a double yellow is do not pass, do not cross. But we, we can find that out if, you know, or we could go with the single yellow, which I think would fit.
I think that's smart, if you, over the next two weeks, could look into that and then we can have a better direction on.
Could we also look into possibility of doing the white line on the side for part of the road? Are there parts of the road that would make sense to do that?
Yeah, actually, at the straightaway near the Hamiltons, there is actually a lot of space there to do it.
And finally, it would be good to, uh, good to, to be sure that the paint is a little more permanent than what we put on flag, because that disappeared fairly quickly, as a matter of fact, so it'd be nice to have something that would last longer.
We left, we, we, because people complained about the way it was, we wanted it to fade and then we have restripped since. But we don't, we're not using thermoplastic on these because we're trying to get people used to them. So, we repaint them every year, but.
Okay.
So, how much time will you need, Ms. Gallagher, to come back to us with, uh, your assessment as to what could be done there, as well as other options for?
Um, I, I believe we can get you something reasonable in, by your next meeting.
Two weeks.
Yeah.
Karen, do you think?
One more, one more, Carol Yozo, 11 Parmenter Road. There is an area that the road dips down at, I guess it's around the 60s on Pine Hill Road, where when it rains heavily, it floods and blocks an entire lane of traffic. And that should be looked at as well, because cars have to go into the other lane to get around the several inches. I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone. And I don't, I don't disagree with the yellow line, let me clarify, I just say it doesn't slow down the traffic.
One more question, quick question. Karen, how long do you think it'll take to get the traffic study done?
I believe that actually can be, they're not, like, it's not like months waiting for that. So, I believe you could probably get it in a month from when, from tonight, at some point, we should have that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody, good discussion.
And thank you, Ms. Rossin, for bringing this to the board detention.
Yeah, thank you, everybody from Pine Hill Road area for coming tonight.
Well, thank you, Board of Selectmen, for considering this.
Moving on to reports, Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just a couple of quick issues tonight. The chief has already talked a lot about the public safety facility. Uh, early this evening, I won't tread, uh, over the ground he's already covered. Other than to say that, um, it, it really was the best part of my day, um, being down there. I also do wanna give, um, a shout out to Tom LaFlame, our IT Director. Tom made sure that, um, you know, by the end of the day today, they had all systems up and running. E911 cut over, but there were two other systems, um, CGIS and IMC, that also needed to get running. Tom was able to get those up, so I do wanna thank him for, for his hard work today, um, to make sure that everything went off as planned. Secondly, golf, um, you'll notice that the, um, the hole and tee box reconstruction, that was a CPC article, um, for the, for the parts of the course that were altered as a result of the public safety facility. That work is ongoing, my understanding, um, uh, from some electronic correspondence back and forth with the architect, should be complete within the next couple of weeks. So, that is moving, uh, in the right direction. Also, um, if you, um, uh, look out behind, um, Public Safety, uh, next to the clubhouse, Assebit, students have descended upon us. They will be doing renovations and improvements to the clubhouse, uh, including a new siding, a new roof and a deck and egress, um, off of the, um, off of the front of the clubhouse. Again, those improvements are made, um, at, at simply the cost of materials for us, there's no labor expenses. Uh, and the students get a great, um, uh, get a great opportunity for real-world experience and we get a great product at the end of this, so, I'm looking forward to it. Um, and I'm, I'm glad that we're able to partner with Assebit on that. And the one final item, um, I did receive an email, I forwarded to you earlier, but it's worth announcing. The, um, conservation restriction for the golf course was signed off on, um, by the Secretary of EOEA. That is back in the mail to us. And, um, I will, um, uh, go anywhere that I have to with counsel to ensure, uh, whenever we have to, to ensure that we can get that filed at the registry and, and have that done in anticipation of the opening of the, uh, public safety facility. So, that's all I have right now.
Excellent, thanks. Chairman's reports, first, just wanna note to everybody that, uh, the Board of Selectmen did meet, uh, August 20th for our goal-setting meeting. Spent the majority of the time discussing some common, uh, themes that the five of us all had. Uh, including, included in that are town policies and development of a handbook for town employees, the transfer station and budget impacts for how that, uh, facility, um, will move forward. That, uh, we expect that that discussions of that will continue this year, certainly as we get into the budget season. We discussed, uh, the need for continued increase in communications. One of the follow-ups from that is to, uh, more permanently assign office hours for Board of Selectmen, to set those on the Tuesdays that the board is not meeting. So, the, um, I guess, second and fourth Tuesdays of each month. So, with that, um, I'd say the second and fourth Tuesday of September and October, I think we ought to do. I know there's actually five Tuesdays in October, but I still think, limit it to the second and the fourth. Again, looking at the calendar, the fourth Tuesday is actually the Tuesday just before Thanksgiving. And I'm gonna suggest that we. and I'm going to suggest that we hold off on, on meeting that date. Likewise, the sec, I'm sorry, the fourth Tuesday in December is Christmas Eve and I'm not going to ask anybody on the board to have to do office hours on Christmas Eve. So two in September, two in October, one November, one December. So Mr. Purple, if we could get word out through all of our social media means to advertise those. And I think if we could get, I don't know if you want to have Ms. Hale's schedule, who from our board attends those? If we could reach out to her just to let her know availability. I would like to limit it to two members only. I think it's wise to have at least two and I do not want to get into quorum and open meeting issues with going greater than two. So if we could...
So why don't we put together, send something out with the dates and then people can, can sign up for the dates?
Sounds good.
And we'll do that.
Sounds good. Lastly, we received two, we, I say we, the Board of Selectmen and the school committee received two applicants for the vacancy on the Assabett School Committee. We were unable to have the school committee join us this evening to discuss that appointment. It is our plan to meet with the school committee next Wednesday night. We will be the first item on the school committee agenda and we will interview the two applicants for that position and our two boards will act to fill that nomination next week so that person can start work. And that'll be 6:30 next Wednesday, I presume at Trotter or Library, where they typically meet. And that is all I have. Members' reports. I'll just go down the line. Mr. Healy?
Yeah, just very quick follow-up to the planning meeting. Summer schedule's out of the way now. Hopefully by our next meeting, we'll have a date when Mr. Shea and I will have a chance to have our first sit downs on the pilot discussions. So the summer's out of the way and hopefully we'll be moving forward on that.
Ms. Brosio?
Wonderful, thank you. I just wanted to congratulate Recreation on a successful summer night considering based on the time constraints with the triple E. There was still a tremendous turnout. I think it was enjoyed by all, so congratulations to them. And also, I would, on behalf of the board, like to wish Captain Mark Sadowski and Lieutenant Neil Espezi safe travels. They've both been deployed. Lieutenant Espezi has been deployed as part of the FEMA, I'm sorry, part of FEMA's National Urban Search and Rescue System Incident Support Team as the Systems Public Information Officer. And Captain Mark Sadowski has been activated as part of the Massachusetts Task Force One Urban Search and Rescue Team as a heavy equipment rigging and water rescue specialist. So best of luck and safe travels to both of them as they help those affected by the storm. Thank you.
Mr. Kalenda? Mr. Stivers? Okay. Remaining two consent agenda items. Item B, approval of Harvard donation of forklift for fire department. And C, the one-day beer and wine license application, notch beer garden for RX Advance Event on 9/25/19.
So moved on both?
Moved, is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Other matters properly before the board. Request from David McKay for special municipal employee designation for EDC members. I see Mr. McKay is here. We had also, and as, as part of this, we have, our board has reached out to town council for some, an opinion on this matter as well. And I thank you for the letter that you have prepared to us. So one question that I have going into this. It was unclear to me, and let's see if I get this correct. Who exactly is currently a special municipal employee within the town of Southborough? And my understanding from that letter and the chronology of it and attachments that had expiration dates, et cetera, that it is the election workers and that work under Mr. Hegarty? That those are the people in town that currently have, or, and that special municipal employee designation? Is that? And it used to be that the Board of Selectmen had that by right. That has since expired as our population has increased above 10,000, as I understand. So I guess if I could just, just so I'm clear, exactly who is a special municipal employee? Just to start this discussion is...
Right, and as council approaches the microphone, I presume? Because I believe in Mr. McKay's letter to us, he had stated that members of advisory committee and Board of Assessors currently have the status as does town council and the tree warden.
Yes. And I didn't see those specific, in the letter that Mr. Cipriano had...
No, the, the... And some of the attachments there.
No, it was. The exhibits indicate that, for example, in 1968, they made it to my predecessor as an individual, which you can't do.
Yep.
It has to be the position. But it was done back then and then it was renewed without my knowledge in 2007. Quite frankly and quite honestly, I see...
And that's for advisory committee?
No, for town council.
For town council, okay.
Personally and professionally, I see absolutely no reason that a town council, the general council of a town, should have special municipal employee status. If I was asked, I would say I, I have no interest, nor should anybody that's my counterpart before or after me.
Okay.
Just by way of an example. But yes, advisory, there's several that were filed with the, the town clerk's office.
So the advisory committee appointments, though. The attachments to those listed specific people and gave expiration dates for the, the appointments to that. So, well, by that attachment, do, do those...
No, because I think a misconception historically has been that it, it runs to the individual and the individual's term. And I think the law is telling us that it runs to the position. That's, that's the, the status of state statute. So the position of, I'm sorry.
So advisory committee members currently are special municipal employees in the town of Southborough.
I believe so, if that's how the town clerk is carrying them.
Okay.
Order of assessors? He's reporting, he's reporting all of the, of those determinations to the State Ethics Commission.
Which I also don't understand why advisory needs to be that. Maybe others know why.
And, you know, that we're not going to solve tonight. I mean, this agenda item is specific to the EDC and, you know, if we need to address the other matters, like, we can do that at another night, but I don't want to go too far off track on the agenda item. But just for my own education and moving forward with this discussion, I just wanted to have a good handle on who exactly is currently in town.
I see Mr. Hagerty sitting back there. Did we get everybody right?
I invite him up to, to sit and tell me what his records would indicate.
I've known Mr. Hagerty be reasonably meticulous with records, so...
Very much so.
I confirm with the ethics, folks in Boston, because they maintain their records, that the positions that the Board of Selectmen at various times have set as SMEs are the advisory committee, the Board of Assessors, town council, the tree warden. And recently, the Board of Selectmen found, minutes from a meeting a few years ago where the Board of Selectmen had designated the council of aging and election workers. Yet that had not been reported to the clerk nor to ethics and I recently, in July, notified both of them of that. It's my understanding that all of these are by position and they do not expire. Okay, and as I did notify everyone, the town's population as of July 19 was 10,818. So we've crossed the threshold of, that affects your position.
But we can rescind those determinations, correct?
Absolutely. And just for what it's worth, when I looked into this a couple of years ago, started looking into this, I did an informal survey of, I asked the town clerks in all the other cities and towns of Massachusetts as to what, how do various towns handle this? And it's all over the map. There's no, it, it just, I can't articulate why one town does some, why some others. It's just, Nantucket seems to do everybody. Most towns are very, more limited.
Mr. Shea, I'd, I'd love to know from council what the advantages and disadvantages of the designation would be.
Well, the advantages, it has been said, and I don't necessarily disagree, is it's supposed to theoretically enhance volunteerism and two of the more compelling provisions, 17 and, and section 20, would be less restrictive. But, and what I mean by that, by way of example, is that, you know, an SME designate on a, on a board would be able to work for someone before a town agency, represent before a town agency, except for the agency that that individual is a part of. So that's, that's the best example. In other words, if it was, by way of example, the EDC, an individual in the EDC could not represent before the EDC but could possibly represent before the zoning board of appeals or the, the group that that individual is part of, could represent before a planning board or other regulatory agency.
So any disadvantages from your perspective?
To be used sparingly. That's just my, my professional experience. They, they should be weighed on a case-by-case basis and make a determination. I mean, if, if it meets the need for volunteerism, I can understand when Nantucket might do something like that because it's, you know, it's, it's a small population and they, they may need people to serve on municipal agencies and they might need to have certain less restrictive provisions so that they can accomplish that. Just by way of another example.
Okay. And any material legal impediments or negatives to the town if we were to do this? Apparently this board has done it for a variety of other boards and committees. From your perspective, if, if, if we approved it for positions on the EDC, any material legal negatives from your perspective and us doing that?
I don't think there would be as long as everybody conforms to the requirements of the law. Mr. Stivers?
I've got a question. I think, I, I agree that legally, technically, we could do that. It seems to me there's an issue of perception here in the sense that there are folks in town who actually are concerned about conflict of interest. And it seems to me that it's useful for us to be very cautious about creating opportunities for questions to arise in terms of conflict of interest. And so I'd be in favor of being actually more restrictive in terms of this and thinking about rescinding some of the prior designations and not adding to the list here is my personal view. Because I think that even though there is no particular reason that I'm aware of for concern here, and I appreciate Mr. McKay's service and that of many other volunteers on the boards, I think it's, it's useful at this point in time to be very cautious about that and keep that line very bright between the conflict of interest and not conflict of interest. So I'm not comfortable in, in this designation.
Ms. Brosio?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Just a few comments, but, but first a question. So you had said that if they couldn't, say, EDC, because it wouldn't be an individual, it would be the, the committee. So they couldn't represent somebody coming before EDC. But in the letter from Mr. McKay, he says that a firm client may advance a project proposal that arguably relates to on, to ongoing work of the EDC. So where is the line in there? I'm, I'm trying to, to pinpoint where, they may not be coming before EDC, but their, their goals are the same as to what EDC is.
I'm not sure, but I think that's because of the, the law firm designation. So maybe he can, Mr. McKay can clarify his comment. Sure. Add a microphone.
Add a microphone, yes.
Thank you. I'd like to answer your question in kind of a roundabout way and set the stage for why this is coming before you now and why I've advanced this. So, and, and I won't profess to be the, the most learned scholar when it comes to the conflict of interest law. But I represent enough municipalities that I sort of come across this issue from time to time. And generally, when I do and there's an issue, I consult with the folks who serve regularly as, as town council on these types of things. So, and, and for folks who haven't read the letter by way of background, I have a, a very mixed practice, as does my firm. I represent a number of municipalities. I think I have five or six municipalities that I'm representing on specific, usually litigation-type matters at the time being, but I also do the other side where I'm representing developers or property owners or, or whatnot. So I, I see this from both sides. This has come up in part because a client of the firm, and I've stayed, I, I don't know much of the details of what the project is and when it's going to be coming forward, if at all. But this issue was flagged for me as one of the partners in the firm. And the, the, the recommendation, if not requirement, was made that if I want to continue on that work, continue on the EDC work, that I have to get special municipal designation or I'm going to have to resign from that position. So because, and in addition to that, and this is coming around to hopefully answering your question, as our firm has gotten larger and we've represented more municipalities and, and more clients and have a number of attorneys and we have three offices now where everyone used to be in one place, we, we, we have begun to sort of formalize a lot of these processes. And we have partners and attorneys in the firm living in, in, you know, all, I wouldn't say all across the Commonwealth, but in a number of different communities where they serve as town council and, or, excuse me, where they serve as volunteers on certain town boards or committees. So we now track all of that. And in addition, as we take on a new municipality for special council work or school council, any of these other positions, we are requiring as part of our retention for special council work or limited council work, that we get special municipal designation because it, we may have past or current clients who have ongoing matters with the town and we don't want to abandon those clients and we have clients who may have future matters with the firm. So as Mr. Cipriano suggested, it would allow a, a, a volunteer on one of the town boards or committees to represent a client before one of the other town boards or committees. So that's kind of how, that, that's why this is coming up before you now and why I'm making this request. And, and so as we're, we're formalizing that, I, I've brought this issue before you. In my view, there's absolutely no downside to the town whatsoever in giving this designation. And I'll, I, I have a slightly different view and maybe it's a different view because we represent so many different municipalities that, that we encourage municipalities to take a pretty liberal view on SME status because it really doesn't change anything. The, the status can be revoked at any time that the selectmen choose to do so. Every provision, including all of the disclosure provisions, which are really the most meaningful provisions in my view of the conflict of interest law, all of those disclosure provisions apply in the same way. You can't represent somebody before your own board or committee. And so to me, there's no real downside in doing that and the upsides are pretty significant. You get, you, you encourage folks to volunteer for boards and committees. You don't put folks who do volunteer for boards and committees in a position where they're undermining their own livelihood while they're serving in that position. And keep in mind that this applies with equal force to spouses as well. So it could just as well be my wife's firm who is representing a client in Southborough that could, could create the same kind of issue. So I think there's, there's a lot of reasons for a, a community to do this. And again, the, there are really only two exceptions that SME designation creates. One, it's the ability to represent a client before another town board or committee, which I have done in town. I have represented clients adverse to the municipality in places where my firm is school council, as an example, because the matters don't really relate to one another. So this is, is pretty common and I think is, is an advantage both to the volunteer and to the community. The other exception has to do with contracts with the town, which is not really so pertinent in, in my situation, but it could come up, for example... in, in my situation, but it could come up, for example, for someone on the advisory committee. They could, or, maybe advisory isn't a, isn't a good example, but another town board or committee with a member whose spouse wants to enter into a, a contract with the town for one purpose or another. SME status provides an exception that has a lot of corollary rules that goes along with it, but for that. And, you know, as we've indicated before, there's a lot of precedent here in town for this. It's also worth mentioning that the State Ethics Commission encourages municipalities to grant SME status, for all of the reasons that, that we've talked about. So, you know, in the event that something comes up, that, that, you know, requires disclosure, that disclosure is still going to have to be made, and I've made those kinds of disclosures in the past, and I would continue doing so, and I know, you know, other folks on the EDC, if it were to come up, would do so as well. So, you know, I guess in summary, I have, I, I agree with, with everything Mr. Cipriano said, with the, I guess, the small caveat, that I think we should be trying to encourage people to volunteer on town boards and committees. I don't get the impression that we are overwhelmed with volunteers in this town, and so I think we should encourage that, rather than discourage it.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, I, my concern is not to stop great people from stepping forward. I think, for me, it's a transparency issue, and I, I worry that through the SME, we're opening a door to every board, committee, and commission in town can ask for the status. And, I, I worry that if we have someone, and, and this is EDC in general, or boards and committees as, as a whole, that if you can't adequately serve without violating potentially a conflict of interest form, or having to fill out a disclosure form, that we're doing a disservice, to some level. Also, I know, I have a copy of your disclosure form, that you did in the past, so disclosures could still be done. I understand you could do that. I think it's a very slippery slope that we're going down here. I'm concerned, again, that any board, committee, or commission could do this. It's hard where you're on the EDC, for me, and, or, I shouldn't say you, EDC as a whole. And your job is to, one of your charges is to facilitate businesses in town. So, if you're on the EDC, and you have a business that you're going to represent coming before our permitting boards in town, to me, that's some level of conflict with your, your job with EDC. That's just a personal preference of mine. I, I just think it's, it's a very slippery slope we're going down. I know there's been questions on the, on the conflict forms, and, and the transparency of that. I wrote down a ton of different notes. But, overall, I think it's a slippery slope, and it's allowing, I guess one of the big concerns for me, too, is the Board of Selectmen aren't even special municipal employees. So, we are allowing our boards and committees to be held to a lower standard, to some level than we are. And I don't think it's, it's against people volunteering. I, I think you can still certainly volunteer, as, as you've done, and you fill out a recusal form, it has been done in the past. I just worry that the lines are crossing with the SME. So, I, I'm really on the fence on this one, probably leaning more towards, I, I think it's a very special thing that the board should do. So, and I think it should be not done lightly. Thank you.
May I comment on that?
Absolutely.
Can you make, can I, can I?
Sure.
Say a couple of things first? And, I mean, Sam, you, you asked, Mr. Stivers asked, what the potential disadvantages are to, to, to volunteers, appointed officials, or even elected officials, not being designated special municipal employees. One of the big problems, and the reason that the, the Ethics Commission allows these exceptions, is because I'm sure that there are a number of people in Southborough right now, serving on boards and commissions in violation of these provisions. Because these are sneaky ones. Because Ms. Brascio is, is absolutely right, that, that we expect and hope that our, our appointed officials, elected officials, if they confront a conflict of interest issue, they fill out their form, they recuse if necessary, but at least there's been proper disclosure. These are, and particularly if you work for an engineering firm, or a law firm, or your spouse does, or, you know, a dependent child, you know, works for a particular entity, you can be in violation of these provisions without even knowing it. Because someone is appearing in front of a, of a, a board that you have nothing to do with. I mean, you can be serving on the, oh, pick, I mean, you could be, be serving on the Historical Commission, and somebody's appearing before a, a board in Southborough that has absolutely nothing to do with that. There's no concern about conflict, there's no, there's no danger of undue influence, or anything like that, but you can find yourself in violation if you're not a special municipal employee. I mean, it's sort of interesting, you know, I, I piggybacked a little bit on Mr. Haggerty, and looked at a number of different towns, and really, it's, it's Massachusetts, you know, 351 towns and, and cities strong, and, and everybody does it differently. But there are some that, that, they're, and, and very reputable towns, like, like, you know, Sudbury. And virtually everybody in Sudbury is a special municipal employee. They've got a whole laundry list of them. And they've got a very robust disclosure requirement for anybody in any conflict of interest situation, but they don't want to discourage, and they don't want to, they don't want to trap people in potential conflict of interest, when they're not really in a conflict of interest. So, that being said, I'll, I'll say one more thing. You might notice that the, the, some of the materials, I don't know if it was Mr. Cipriano or, or Mr. Haggerty, who passed out the materials with a 1998 date for the advisory committee, and all of a sudden, there were some designations in that. Well, there was somebody named Healy on the advisory committee, and I raised the issue back then, because I, I was concerned about it. Not because of me, I was working on the, in the, in the public sector back then, but because of, of my wife, who was in the private sector, and concerns about that. And, I, I'm, I'm pretty, pretty strict. I'm not sure if you can be more strict, when it comes to conflict of interest, and disclosure and the like, but I'm very wary of the special municipal employee not getting that designation, because it sounds like we would lose, lose Mr. McKay, if he doesn't get an SME. I have a feeling that there are other lawyers in town, with this issue being raised, that they might find it difficult to, to serve in appointed positions, because their law firm then can't appear, you know, in, in, in front of any board, or act in any, any capacity relating to a, a matter involving the town of Southborough. So, my final thing, though, that's my long, that's my long prologue. How soon do you need an answer?
I suppose I don't have to have an, I, I wasn't given a, a strict deadline, but I think sooner rather than later is, is.
No, I, I guess.
So, if, if, if the determination is not made tonight, I don't think that's.
Well, the only thing is, I don't, I'm, I'm, what I, what I'm not comfortable doing is just considering it in the context of the EDC. I think it's a little bit bigger issue than that, and rather than, rather than just talk about it with respect to EDC, I mean, Mr. Stivers, I think your point is a good one. I think you might, you and I might be on opposite sides of the, the issue. I think that, my view is, I think that there should be more people, particularly for, you know, boards that have very narrow responsibilities. The, the idea that, that, that somehow they have restrictions on them, that they might quite frankly, right now, be in violation of, because they're not special municipal employees. I think it's a bigger discussion, I'd like to have that bigger discussion. And if, if Mr. McKay doesn't need an answer quickly, before he fills out his resignation letter, I'd like to have that, I'd like to have that conversation.
Yeah. That's certainly a perspective that I hadn't considered, and didn't know about, you know, going into this.
And, and, and just, and just, I, I ran an Ethics Commission for eight years, and I oversaw the conflict of interest prosecutions for the state AG for a couple of years. So, I, I don't come to this as a, as a, as a neophyte. I mean, I understand why the reason, why the conflict of interest laws exist, why the exceptions exist, and why there are special municipal employee designations. And also, having lived in Massachusetts, I understand why the cities and towns here do it completely differently. So, but I, I think it's, it's, if we're going to do it, we should do it not just with respect to the EDC, but consider it on a, on a, on a broader scale.
I agree with that, just so we're not hit with, you know, each meeting, a different group coming forward, looking for this.
So, anyway, that's my perspective on, on, on the thing.
Mr. Clenda.
So, my challenge with that is, you know, we, we set out great agendas of things we're going to do later, and, you know, months go by, and we haven't completed the analysis of every single board and committee that's under the Board of Selectmen, where we could provide them this designation, or decide to take it away from those who currently have it. We have a current need, is what it sounds like, from the EDC, and definitely from Mr. McKay's perspective, who has served this town as a volunteer for a number of years. You know, I, if the State Ethics Commission encourages towns to designate volunteers as SMEs, and it's a way to help bring, you know, volunteers into the town, keep volunteers who are currently serving, you know, I, I would rather, and I would like to see us move to appoint special municipal employee designation for the EDC tonight, and then conduct whatever analysis we want to do for the entirety of all other boards and commissions, committees, which, again, I honestly think is not a one-day, or a one-week activity. It probably would take some time, as to whether or not we want to do it with every board and committee, but at least we could do the analysis, and at least we could, we could also handle one of the issues tonight. And then, what I would also want to see is, is, if, if I'm reading this correctly, that, you know, the tree warden in particular is an, is an SME, that position, that may have been designated a long time ago, as maybe advisory was as well. That, the current members in those positions may have no idea that they are an SME, and would strongly encourage, regardless of what we do tonight, that through Mr. Purple, however this works out, that those individuals be informed that they are SMEs, and what they're, you know, what that means for them. So, I would love to do the analysis, and I agree with Mr. Healy that that should be done. I would also like to see that this particular item move forward today, as we analyze the others. With that, and we can continue the discussion, if there's a second, but I would move that we appoint special municipal employee designation for the EDC members.
So, the motion has been made, is there a second?
I will sec, I will second it for purposes of discussion, but I'm going to disagree with it. I dove into this, and what other towns do is, some other towns, again, there's 351 different ways of doing it here, is, they just set out criteria for what they are going to consider when deciding whether or not a particular position, because it goes by, it goes by the position, whether a particular position is going to be designated as special municipal employee. And my preference would be to have that discussion, particularly if, again, if Mr. McKay is fine, I know, I'm, I'm loading up Mr. Shea on, on our potential agenda for a couple of weeks from now, but I'd, I would rather have that discussion, and, and maybe circulate some of the stuff that, I guess, it sounds like Mr. Haggerty may have found, and that I have, and, and we've got a little bit more of a breadth of, of consideration before we take a vote, even on, on the special municipal employees. Are you nodding because you agree with me, Mr. Cipriano?
Well, no, that's, that's a policy decision. So, I'm going to leave the policy to you.
Fair enough.
Yes, I did, I did notice that there was a Martin F. Healy in here, from Eight Upland Road.
1998.
Pointed September 22nd, 1998, so there you are.
He caused trouble back then, too.
But that was a positional appointment, not an individual appointment, right?
Correct.
Can I make a comment on that? I actually don't think Mr. Healy and I are that far apart in terms of the concept, because I do appreciate the issue that a lot of folks out there probably are affected, or are not aware of it. But I, I still believe that the net effect is, is in terms of the importance of transparency, and cutting off the, the possibility that someone might think that there's something inappropriate going on, I think is, is worth creating some pressure in terms of the volunteer side. I'd also point out, it's my understanding that what the State Ethics Commission says is, they encourage towns to weigh carefully the trade-off between additional volunteers and the conflict risk, and not encourage people to use special municipal employees. That's my understanding of what State Ethics has said about that. So, we ought to confirm that before we talk about it again.
Ms. Brascio?
Thank you. I think it's been compelling, on all sides. I do have questions. I am certainly not comfortable tonight taking a position on this, and unfortunately, if I, if I had to take a position, it would be against this. I'd like to, Mr. McKay has said, it's, it's not dire straits that he has it tonight, and it's not a vote of unconfidence against you, sir, and I'm, I'm hoping you're not taking it that way at all, Mr. McKay. I think you do a tremendous job at what you do. I'm just trying to look at a, a little bigger and a little broader of a picture, and I just want to be comfortable with the decision that I make. And unfortunately, I'm not comfortable with supporting this motion now. I certainly would like to have more discussion on this. I will certainly be doing a little bit more homework, I thought I did enough, but obviously I didn't. You've given me some thoughts, I, I'd like to dig more into the ethics as well. So, I would be in support of bringing this up, not at our next agenda, because I won't be here at the meeting. I'd, I'd like to participate in this discussion, so maybe in October, the first meeting in October.
I'll ask Mr. Healy a very unfair question. So, you had described a process to, you know, looking at criteria for which boards, committees, it made the most sense. What process do you think that we ought to follow to, to arrive at that for, for our town?
I think we're moving towards it, I don't have a problem with the process we've had tonight.
Okay.
With the discussion with Mr. McKay, where we hear what the potential concerns are, from his perspective, as a member of the particular board, again, remembering that the, the, the designation goes to the, to the entity, not to the individual. Raise the concerns are, and I think the EDC is different than some other boards, and there is an expertise that I think we value on the, the, the EDC. I think in, in, Mr. McKay happens to have some expertise in, in areas that we value on the EDC. Taking into consideration those sort of factors, and then make a determination about whether or not that, that particular entity, the EDC, because it wouldn't just flow to Mr. McKay, it'd flow to everybody on the, on the EDC, whether or not that particular entity falls into a category that we would grant special municipal employee designation. So, the discussion tonight is probably going to mirror that for particular entities, I would think. But I just want to, I would want to make sure that we, if you look at other towns, some of them have, have specific criteria that they lay out, others are more process-oriented, and they simply lay out a process that they want. I, I lean more towards that, but you'll, but if, if you, if you take a look at it, you'll see that some have, have specific criteria that they identify, much more specific than I'd be inclined to do. But, but at the end of the day, it's a discussion like we're having tonight, which is, you know, hopefully robust, about whether or not, what are the pluses for a particular committee? What are the minuses? What are the perception issues? And are we comfortable, given that mix, in either granting or not granting the special municipal, municipal, special municipal employee designation? So, anyway, how's that for dodging your question?
So, you're talking about a process that is going to be done in three weeks, for the October 1 meeting? You'll have, we'll have all of that done by October 1st, for every other board and committee? Those who haven't come before us requesting it, but we have one here who has.
I think if we, I think that we need to be comfortable with a process that we're going to use for Mr. McKay.
Yep.
That we would use for every other entity that came before us. So, until we're comfortable that whatever, however we're going to treat you, we're also going to treat other committees the same way, and we may be there. Again, I think we're pretty close tonight, in what we've done. I just am not, I, I would, I would want to dot those i's and cross those t's, delve more deeply into the question that Mr. Shea asked me, about exactly how, what process I would lay out. I could probably do it in a couple of hours, but not in a couple of minutes.
Right.
Is that volunteering?
No, understood. You know, and I guess it's, you know, the engineer in me was, you know, reaching out, I need someone to tell me, yes, this is absolutely the best thing in the world to do, or no, don't you even dare think about this. And, you know, with a clear recommendation one way, and that clearly is not the case here. There are strong arguments on both sides, I think. And, again, I just would feel more comfortable taking arguments on both sides, I think. And, again, I just would feel more comfortable taking a further, you know, in-depth review in this and, and trying to set up criteria for, you know, if I am going to say yes or no to one group, why would I look at that criteria and then give an opposite answer to another group? And I'd be able to have to justify that, and I don't know that I, I'm in a position to do that now.
And for instance, just, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Colanda, just very quickly, you know, the one that I liked was the Town of Amherst, which has got a process for this that they adopted. And they, they have certain, you know, preliminary stuff that the, the Board of Selectmen is responsible for doing, but then, you know, specific requirements. The, you know, the Board of Selectmen shall announce that any town committee desiring SME status shall submit a letter of application stating the reasons and the justification for that status. Seems perfectly reasonable to me. We don't have that process right now. Mr. McKay has sort of jump-started that by doing something along those lines, but we don't have a specific process in, in, in effect. You know, on granting SME status, an open file shall be created in the town manager's office to store papers for each committee granted SME status available for public inspection. Sounds perfectly reasonable. We don't have that right now for, for our SMEs or otherwise. Annually, on the date of the original designation of SME status to a committee, any committee intending to retain that status shall resubmit the, for review, the designation, and the Board of Selectmen will determine whether or not it's justified. Again, that seems perfectly reasonable. Some other towns have stuff that don't seem as reasonable, or a little bit more restrictive, or some are loosey-goosey, but that's the sort of thing I'd want to do across the board before I did it for a single board. That's all.
Yep.
So, as I withdraw the motion, what I would like to do is, is, is ask Mr. Healy then to share with us in the, within, you know, before our next meeting, I would love to be able to see what your recommendation is for a process, because clearly you've done some additional research on this as to what others have done. Share that with the board. Not that we're gonna communicate about it, but I want to be able to see it, analyze it, and maybe we can share comments to, to Mr. Purple as to what we think a proposal could be. And then, at our next meeting, with an opportunity for everyone within the next couple of weeks to, to weigh in on what they think the best process would be. Maybe we have a discussion on the process, and then the following meeting on the first, hopefully have a vote. And if there are any other boards or committees that came forward that they wanted to request the status as well, we would have a process in place and, and set up different times when others could come in and, and have that same discussion.
That makes perfect sense to me, and I'm happy to just route everything through Mr. Purple and make sure folks...
Could, could I ask Mr. Healy also to consider including whatever criteria you think might be appropriate for a board to consider as part of that decision, because I think there are models out there. It would be helpful. In addition to process, we don't want to get overloaded with either process or criteria, but if there are some good general guidelines that say, here are the kind of things that people need to think about, articulate, understand as they make that decision, I think that'd be very helpful, too, because I do think it would be helpful to have a, a structure in place to look at these things, and then, at some point, it's subjective in terms of how do you weigh various components of this, but it would be very helpful to have a consistent way of approaching it.
Yeah, no, I, all of those requests make a lot of sense. I'm happy to do it, and I'll put together a packet and route it through Mr. Purple.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Thank you.
Gentlemen?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next other matters properly before the board nomination process.
Chairman? Just a, a process question, I'm sorry. So, in terms of timing, it sounds like there's gonna be information that's shared through Mr. Purple for the next selectman's meeting. Do you anticipate this will be on the agenda for next time, or will it be that October meeting?
I would think October 1st, for the actual, specific action on EDC and action on it. I think a discussion on the criteria for the next meeting, but I don't know that we're gonna...
If I understood correctly, the next meeting, we're gonna have a discussion on the process, and I think the board will then set up the process of how you're going to determine whether or not a board or committee meets the criteria to be designated as special municipal employees. And then, the meeting on the 1st, you'll then entertain the requests that Mr. McKay has put before you. That's how I understood it. I could be wrong.
And I'm not here at our next meeting. I am out of town, so...
I thought, I thought Ms. Brascio wanted to be part of that process discussion.
Because I love process. I mean, I can certainly call in, but it's hard to actively take part in a discussion.
Yep.
Can't we do it all on the 1st?
I'm here at both, so either's fine with me. Are you okay if it's, if we're meeting from now?
My, my concern is that it's gonna bleed beyond that, and so if it's October 1st, that's fine, but I, I would, I would be concerned if it, if it went beyond that.
I mean, I'm happy to call in. It's just really tough to participate sometimes.
I agree.
When, when you're not physically in the room.
Yep.
So, but I will leave it up to the board to decide if it's easier for the board, then, you know, I will certainly try to call in and participate that way.
All right, no, so respectful of that. Let's try and shoot for the 1st then for...
Thank you.
For, for discuss the process, and we can start considering appointments on the 1st as well, for the designation.
And I think we've already done a fair amount of prep work now for it. I think we understand the major issues at least, so hopefully the process piece can go quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, nomination process for Metro West Regional Collaborative seat on the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization. So, there was included in our packet a letter from the executive director regarding municipal elections to the Boston Regional Metropolitan Planning Organization, with nomination papers due Friday, October 4th. So, is this, I guess if you could get a little background on this process for us, Mark?
There, there's a lot of paperwork, I think, that was included in here. This isn't something the board has always considered, because it's kind of a steep hill to climb. It's a, it's a three-year seat. The Metropolitan Area Planning Council is currently, this is, the current members, the city of Boston has two seats inherently, and then there are 12 elected municipalities, one seat from each of the eight MAPC subregions. Ours is obviously the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Framingham currently holds the seat. It is a three-year, it is a three-year commitment. Again, 22 voting members total. The, if we are interested in putting forward a candidate from Southborough, we have, you are required to have nomination papers in by Friday, October 4th. The kicker is that you need to get support from five municipal...
Four, four others, right?
Yeah, you need five municipal leaders, or from five different communities within your subregion, to support your nomination.
Didn't, didn't I read, did I read correctly that our chief executive is the only one who can represent us?
That's what I read.
Mr. Chief Executive?
That's you.
I nominate Mr. Shea.
I think it's a great idea.
Fantastic, go for it.
I will, I will take my name out of the running.
But I think it has to be the chief executive, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if Brian, Brian doesn't, doesn't want to do it, then, or doesn't have the time to do it, then...
No, in all honesty, I do not have the time to...
Thank you, Sam, for sharing that.
So, sorry we can't draft you, but...
Although others who are very, very interested in the board would like to reorganize, then we can have that discussion, but...
Nope. On a related matter, we also saw a, a deal relative to the MWRA Advisory Board that's accepting nominations. Is that something we're interested in? That looked like it was a possibility, maybe, hard to know, but...
I thought each member community had a seat on the advisory board.
Now, each member community has a seat on the, on the board or something, and then there's a 20-member advisory board that actually does all the work, it looked like.
The board itself in the MWRA is appointed by statutory positions. So, the governor has a couple of appointees, the mayor does, and all that, but it is the advisory board that I believe is representative from each member community.
Well, it may be, the way I was reading it is there's a advisory board, the picture showed like a couple dozen people that were somehow elected or chosen by vote of certain...
Well, I can tell you, currently, the Southborough representative is Ms. Brascio.
Ms. Brascio, I saw that.
I believe that that is...
Of course.
Did you know that?
I've done a great job at it, let me tell you.
Chief Executive, a chief executive or former chief executive, she's on it. But this is a smaller group that somehow gets elected by a vote that actually makes recommendations to the larger world or whatever, that was, seemed to be, have some reasonable amount of power to, to do things. So, I don't know if we're interested in that or not, which is not a slam dunk, certainly, we're not...
Yep. So, the, and from that perspective, that, again, going back to this previous discussion, I would need to recuse myself from that with a number of projects that I'm involved with.
Okay.
As an engineer with the MWRA, so I don't think that it would be appropriate to...
Couldn't do that.
To hold that.
Well, Mr. Stivers, this is something you just brought up.
I agree.
If it's, if it's something you want to explore, I wholeheartedly endorse it.
Second that.
I didn't, I didn't think the requirement was for everybody, but I, I had some mild interest in that, but again, I think the, the issue is, is it feasible or reasonable or whatever, or are you, basically, it's something that's sort of an inside game that everybody knows who the next elected members are gonna be, so there's no way for somebody from Southborough to actually do it.
Well, that's something we can look at for...
I'm guessing the MBTA is a pretty high hill to climb for a town like Southborough, although, and I don't want to get into the MMT, MBTA issues. That's for another day.
MWRA, though, not MBTA.
I'm sorry?
This is MWRA.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I think MWRA, just the materials that Mr. Purple sent out, seemed, it seemed a little bit more open. So, again, if you're interested, I'd encourage you, I, again, I fully endorse it, Mr. Stivers.
As do I.
I mean, I, I would be interested in calling the gentleman that was listed there as a source for information and seeing what he has to say.
It's a quick, it's a quick process. I think you've got, I, I'm looking at this quickly. I think you need to, I think it's September 11th.
Week or two, yeah.
You need to decide for nominations. Then, they have a nomination committee meeting September 13th.
Yep.
Then, the full advisory board meets, I think, a week later on the, I think maybe the 19th, to vote on the executive committee. So, while you were talking, Sam, I just quickly pulled up the executive committee. You know, most of these, the, most of these people, there's someone from Boston Water and Sewer, Chelsea, Stoneham, Bedford, Lexington, Burlington, Malden, Newton, Revere. I'm not hearing anyone near us yet. Somerville, Melrose, there is a gentleman from, from Natick, Cambridge, Arlington. Most of the communities appear to be water and sewer, and sewer communities, and I'm, I'm not sure if that would be detrimental to any, any nomination we were bringing forward, but...
I expect there are many things that are detrimental, but I actually have mild interest in calling the fellow and saying, what's going on here?
Yep.
Do you think, well, it might make, it might be helpful. I, I would move that we, we endorse Mr. Stivers exploring and support his, any efforts he wishes to undertake to put himself in contention for a spot on the MWRA board.
I second that.
So, and again, just...
Any discussion? You're, you're, you're refused, right?
Well, I will just say this, that, again, MWRA Advisory Board, by statute, the advisory board's members include the chief elected official and a designee from each of the 60 cities and towns. So, each of the 60 cities and towns...
It's the executive committee.
This is the executive committee.
So, and from the advisory board, don't, do they then select an executive committee from that group?
Back to the email.
And currently, Southborough, Southborough's representatives are Ms. Brascio and Ms. Gallagher.
Gallagher, yep. I mean, that's something that a phone call could quickly sort out.
Sure.
But again, as the chief elected official, I would need to recuse. I would need to recuse as the chief elected official. So, I would, I don't know if the statute then allows it to go to another elected official.
Oh, you were the, you were...
She was chair.
You were chair, which is why.
Yep.
But it's not clear to me the executive committee has to come from the board.
Well, it's worth a phone call. You know what? I would, I would, I would, I would keep my motion the way it was, that we endorse Mr. Stivers exploring, and if, if it's, if you are otherwise eligible, support your, if you choose, support any efforts you wish to undertake to become a member of, what is it called, Mr. Purple, the executive committee?
It's the, it's the MWRA Executive Committee.
The executive committee.
Yeah, and the answer may well be a quick no deal, so that's fine.
I understand. That's my motion.
Second.
You're, are you recused, Mr. Shea?
I am gonna recuse from this, yes.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
Nope.
I'm gonna be very upset if you vote against this, Mr. Stivers.
This is the worst idea. Worst idea I've ever heard.
All in favor? All right.
Thank you.
All right, last item. The board will be entering into executive session per Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, and not returning to open session to discuss the following items. One, police union CBA exemption 3, and two, golf course management contract exemption 2, as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Requires a roll call vote. Shea, aye?
Healy, aye.
Brascio, aye.
Stivers, aye.
We are in executive session.